Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park zoning board of adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, can you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. This meeting is being recorded by AP TV, and I ask anybody with a cell phone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Nellie Passerini?
Here.
J.J. Hall?
Here.
Vice Chair John Scully is absent this evening, and Chairman Avaloni?
Here. All right, just a quick housekeeping issue. The resolution that's listed, we're going to table for tonight and carry it to our next zoning board meeting.
And just to clarify the big nine, there are three characters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, first application up is 1206 Dunlue Street. Ms. Corey, Mr. Cromer, and Mr. Passman.
Good evening, board members. My name is Carlton Cromer. I am the attorney for the applicant, the property owner of 1206 Dunlue Street. On the property is a single-family home. The homeowner is looking to renovate it. She's hoping to improve the functionality of the home. It's an old home with small rooms and a setup and a flow that really needs some improvement in functionality that the architect is going to go over. She's also looking to do this renovation to add space for her children when they come to visit and to create a writer's studio for her when she's looking for some seclusion to write. The property is a unique property, and that's what's really bringing us here. It has an irregular shape. It has unique topography in that it slopes down towards Deo Lake. And it's landlocked because it's at the end of a road where the city right-of-way ends, but it's not paved with a street. So strict application of the zoning standards to this particular property is impossible to comply with because of the unique characteristics of it. And as a result, we're here asking for variance for the modest project that the applicant is proposing. So without further ado, I'd like to call up the architect who has put together some plans detailing the proposed renovation. Mr. Passman, would you come up, please?
And Mr. Passman. Do you swear upon the testimony about the gives the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record, spelling your last name.
Don J. Passman. Passman, please.
And if I can also just swear on the question as well. You swear upon the testimony about the gives the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record, please.
Donnabell, our board planner.
Jerry Frieda, board engineer.
Thank you. And also just record keeping, Mr. Chair, I did review the notices on this matter.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Mr. Passman, could you just review some of your credentials? I know you've been before the board before.
I've been before this board for many years. Graduated a Masters of Architecture degree from University of Michigan. I started my own practice in 1988. I have my partnership with Anthony since 1998 and have worked in most of towns in the Shore area of Monmouth County and some in Ocean County.
Is your license still in good order?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you.
Could you explain to the board the project and walk the board through the plans that you've prepared?
Yeah, just in brief, it's a two-story house with an integrated or attached, if you will, one-car garage, one-story. On the south side, there's also a one-story piece that's like a little foyer entryway. And on the north side, there's another little one-story piece that's part of the existing structure. Inside, there's only like a couple bedrooms. The kitchen's kind of small. Again, that little entry foyer is only five feet wide, so there's a lot of limitations. It's not very large. Even the garage has a stairway going from it down to the basement. So it leaves what's left of a concrete slab next to the stairway thin, as in, you'd have to have a pretty small car to park it in there and by any standards. So I'm talking to Jennifer Corey, my client.
Was that garage always an attached garage to that house? Or was it put onto the house at some other point?
We purchased it like that.
Oh.
I understand, Mr. Cromer. I'm just asking.
From the way it's constructed, it looks like it's always been there. And especially with the connection of this basement, the stairway access to this basement, within that frame of, you know, structural frame of the garage. So it's like a little well that you go down.
Uh-huh.
So it takes away from three or four feet.
Because normally, our garages are actually detached from our homes, and this is unusual that it's attached.
I would, it looks to me like it was always part of it just from the way it was constructed and the way it connected. Yeah, I mean, it's hard to tell. I haven't really done any real research on it, but if it were, I would think that maybe it wasn't.
Something else prior to being a garage.
I would say, if anything, there was no garage there, and then that was added. But I can't imagine it was ever, that particular piece was a detached portion of the house. It would always, you know, this wouldn't, you wouldn't have room because of the property line.
Okay.
So anyway, I'm asked to make the household more modern in terms of size, bedrooms, kitchen, the typical things, bathrooms are things that you want in a house today when you're spending this much money and you're going to be on the lake. And so the second floor was very low. It didn't have a lot of headroom in most of the rooms. The two rooms that were adjacent to the center stairway, that the idea is to increase the second floor to be a real structure, eight-foot-high walls, and to extend it because, again, it only had a couple bedrooms. And also to take away this little foyer space on the south side and make it more usable with a bathroom and so forth. And I can go through the plans. And then add a second floor over this one-story piece, again, to give you a better, give her a better footprint. Knew that was going to happen. So there's a lot of things that are, that need work in the house structurally, et cetera. So it was a whole encompassing project, and what you're going to get in the end, hopefully, if we're approved, is get something that's modern house in terms of its footprint and amenities that people want in today's world. So if you want, I can go to the plans. I have actually, I assume you have a set of plans also? I don't know what was submitted.
These plans were submitted.
Okay. So would you like to walk them?
Yeah, what do we have as the packet then? Are we just on A1 at this point?
That's what it is, please.
Yeah, I got the houses pre-farmed, so let's start with A1.
In terms of the site plan, you can see there's a lot of shaded area which represents reconstruction. So there's the integrated one-story garage. Here's the two-story portion which is remaining. And then there's these additions that wrap around, if you will. And that's just the concept now. In doing so and adding on to the east side, that became a side yard area setback. It's one of the features. It was going to be what's in the ordinance, according to about 20 feet. The reason is that if we went five feet less, the addition would be three foot addition. Plus, in terms of floor plan... I'll show you the existing floor plan. So you can see the existing floor plan. There's a little, this little foyer on the south side. Center stairway, small kitchen, the dining room, little bathroom, the back step. This side door, this step. Second floor has two small bedrooms, closets under each. Rooms are very small and not very much volume made. The proposed plan with the addition going out eight feet, just right here. This is going east. Side yard, really a beautiful setback in that case because the front is at the garage. So adding on to that is a very nice kitchen, great room kind of a feel. The living room remains, and the garage becomes this writing studio, which is, you know, it's a low space. It doesn't really have any other value. It's really nice, bolted ceilings, beams and everything. And this is what Ms. Corey wants to have. It's worked out perfectly for her. You add more windows, you have more view to the lake. And that's the end. So adding on to the side and to the south side, sorry, to the east side, the south side, you have a nicer foyer, we have like a pantry area and then a bathroom here. And there's the exit out there with a little roof on it, which is also part of the variance because she likes to go paddle more than the lake. She can walk back up here, she can shower as she comes in. Or if it's winter or something and someone's in the space, that's the bathroom that they can use for the guests. So we kind of look for both things. Second floor, we have a much larger master bedroom plus a desk bedroom and a large master bathroom as well. So all that is a very modern, even the footprint seems not that large, even with the addition. But I think it really lends itself to, you know, the best we can do and not try and expand it too much because we have to add new additions. In terms of elevation, you can see the existing structure is better below the second floor. This is the garage, the very base, and also the deck. The greatest steps. Entry foyer, not very much. So doing the addition, we're going to try to keep that wide as a technical as existing house, having siding, machine siding. I think, who knows, appropriate. Nice entry foyer, this one has a narrow roof on it, which one of the standards is. How many in line, but I think it was, well, it's an entry piece. The other portion, piece of the variance is a fireplace, a fireplace, clear, everybody's doing a big strong. But that's a front yard setback by a lot because you're one-four feet down and you have that on there, you might add two feet. So that's this portion of the front that requires a variance. I know there's a lot of comments from the client, like, you know, four feet. All I need to do is...
So at this point, you're giving up your garage and making it into another livable space, and there's going to be no place for your car to go?
Well, yes, but there is a place for the car to go. And that would be adjacent to it on the side of that garage. There's an off, you know, on-site, hardly spaced, it was paved now. But giving up that garage, it's not really giving up because it's really hard to get your car in and get out of the car when you're in because it's such a small space. So it's kind of there, but it doesn't really work. Anybody has a garage like that, it's going to be cursing. You're going to have to go in the door and shimmy out of the car. So it's like, okay, it's not really that creative a space. Anyway, parking, I love the ordinance, it's by the ordinance, but it was useful as in, you're a beautiful space for working. Right, with the views to the lake. And that's the whole charm of the house. And it's on the lake and have a garage where the lake is, you know, seems to be counterproductive in terms of site planning, if you will. So putting the car adjacent to it, you know, it just seemed to make more sense now. You had one on-street, on-site parking space, add one if you count the garage. You're offering one again by using the garage spaces in the writing studio space. So it's a trade one-for-one. Have a one-car variance anyway. So trying to maintain that, thought that was a justification of using that space special.
Can you tell me again where the proposed parking of the car will be?
It's just to the south of the actual garage structure. So it's shown on the site plan as a paved area.
Would it be in front of what the garage door is now?
No, it's to the side.
So you're relocating.
Where that big bush is?
Go ahead.
So you'd be parking in front of the actual writing studio? What would prohibit you from parking?
On the south side of the studio and in front of the main work.
Got it.
Yes.
Why not just park where the tire tracks are in this photo, where the garage door was?
No, because that's not that piece.
It's the right of way.
Okay, got it.
And where is the car currently parked?
In the garage.
It really is?
Oh, it is in the garage.
Is it really in the garage or not?
There's a garage door, there's a slab, you know, yes, you can put a car in there.
No, I'm asking.
Do they really park that?
What is really being used now as the parking spot?
That is used as a garage. She bought the house, that was a garage space.
But what does she use it for?
That's what I'm asking. Is a car, is a car parked in there or is it used for storage?
No, the proposed use of that space is for her writings to be there.
We got that, but what?
I could answer it, I think. And I apologize if I'm interjecting. I didn't mean to be rude.
It's a factual question.
Yeah, it's a factual question. It's not currently being used for parking the garage.
Thank you.
For parking a car.
So she's parking on the street?
So the next question is, where is the car parked now?
She would park on the street.
So you're creating off a garage that you don't use for parking, and you're presently parking on the street, okay? And you're going to make it into a writing studio so that you can have what you want and you will continue to park on the street, right?
I'd like to slightly change that. The parking space right now in the garage is undersized and not really functional for parking.
I understand.
But we are not intending on parking off-street. We are adding or relocating the on-site parking. So we are proposing a new location for parking the car on-site. And that proposed new location is right here. And that's on our property.
Okay, so you're going one-for-one?
One-for-one, correct.
Okay.
It's just a relocation.
All right, so she gets the studio, she keeps a place to park on-site.
Correct.
But that entails moving the driveway, is that correct?
Well, there really isn't a driveway. There's a curve cut.
It really isn't a driveway?
There is not a driveway down. There's a curb cut at the end of Dunlue and gravel and sort of compacted soil, if you will, that would take you into the garage. There's nothing formalized as a driveway. In our plan now, we have more of a formalized gravel driveway that we more maintain to the paving area for parking.
Jerry, could you, could you kind of explain that?
It's an unfinished driveway is the best way I can explain it. It's not paved, it's not concrete, there's no curb. It's just hardened over time for vehicles riding up over.
And is that city property? It's right-of-way? Who owns it? It's city property?
City property to make that turn to get onto the property into the garage. Because the garage comes almost right up to the property.
There are several questions regarding the right-of-way. Go ahead, Wendy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is, I'm just, is the garage in front of the curb or behind, I guess, the curb cut?
Yeah.
No?
Yes.
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 There is a curb.
And the proposed parking space is parallel to the garage.
But you see where the property is. But there are several questions regarding the right-of-way as a...
Yeah, because it's very difficult to envision. The right-of-way goes straight across the property to the lake. So the frontage, as was explained by Mr. Passman, is where the garage faces, that's the front yard. It doesn't look like it from the street, but that is truly the front yard for zoning purposes. And the existing garage, which I also believe was added later to that.
I think so, yes.
That existing garage, it can't function properly. My guess is they haven't used it for a car in years because it's just not big enough.
Yeah, Mr. Passman, can you, it shows on the plan. Can you tell us the actual interior dimensions?
It hadn't been added at some other point.
No, it's only...
Eight foot one.
It's hard to say.
It's eight foot one wide.
Oh, yeah.
Where this retaining wall is, if you will, that takes you down to the basement. So it's eight foot from, you know, the basement.
Which is narrower than a normal parking space. Instead, you've got walls on either side of you, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure that the garage or, you know, the vertical space either for the garage door, the door, the section on the garage doors. It's tough. In fact, you know, the garage was open to it, but it's not very practical.
And while we're on this topic, I'd just point out that the only access to this property is through the right-of-way. So hopefully...
The unapproved portion of the right-of-way.
Excuse me?
The Dunlue right-of-way, but it's the unimproved part of it. Like, part of Dunlue is improved. It kind of skirts the frontage, or the radius, but the rest of it is unimproved. So like, where the apron is, there's that inlet curtain. That's the approved part, but the rest is just skirt. And just to clarify, there was a little double talk, but I did just check the historic aerial. And you can see in the 1953 aerial, it's very clear. It looks like the house is just recently built. The garage is there. And then the next series of aerials before that is 1947, and the house isn't there.
Interesting. Is that the only access to the basement, just through the garage, currently?
No, there's an interior stair.
Okay.
And currently, there's an interior stair, and we're not changing that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The current interior stair to the basement is going to remain.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions for Mr. Passman? Board professionals?
I have a question too. So in the plan, you're going to rip the roof off the house?
Yes.
The entire, build a new roof?
Walls and roof, yes.
So that's what'll allow you to make that addition off the back, look? Because you're going to put a whole new roof on the house.
There's a new roof, right, correct. And there's also those balconies we have that face the, on the second floor, that face the lake, so that on the second floor, you want to sit out and enjoy the lake? You can't.
Is there any engineering testimony or no?
No engineering testimony.
Okay, maybe I answer a question. So is there a way, I know you're right next to the lake and the groundwater is probably high. Is there a way to handle the runoff from the house so it's not going straight into the lake?
From what I see, you know, there's, the question you had was pre- and post-development runoff. And what I see is not, I mean, there's a little more footprint that we're adding. We're adding about 800 square feet of impervious coverage. But some of the, some of the area is going toward the south, not necessarily all to the north. I would say half, almost half is going back to the south side, which will eventually run that way, but that's a long distance before it gets the lake. Anything that's coming, even off the back part of the house, the north side, it's going to take a long time to get to the lake. It's got a lot of slope. And, you know, in terms of coverage, we're way below the coverage that's allowable on that property, although we have some wetlands and whatnot. But we're only at 30% or 22%. So in the back, where, right now, it actually gullies into the house, I think as they build this addition on the south side, it can grade up a little bit so it can go east-west and eventually around, of course, the one going to the west is going to go more towards Dunlue. And I think that's okay, that seems to cover things. One's going the other direction. There's a retaining wall behind, so we can get graded up just a little bit, another foot maybe, so we can run around the house.
All that will help. You're going to have gutters on the new house?
Yes, gutters and downspouts.
The downspouts. Any way to tie them into a trench with a pipe, direct it out to the road where we can put some stone perforated pipe to charge some of the water into the...
I mean, there's not a lot of space over there on that side.
No, no.
If it runs to grade, if it runs to grade, it's going to run slowly, I think, off either side. On the north side, you wouldn't want to do that, right? You want to pipe it. So it's got a lot of land to sheet through on the grass. I'd say, I mean, this side, there's, it can be. I guess we could run a pipe. But there's not a lot of daylight.
I know, I know, but if we can pop up a...
You want to pop up a emitter on one side and the others, if you want.
Yeah, actually, I think I'd rather have it...
Go this way.
Yeah, so near the road.
So there's, there's one, two, three downspouts that are coming on the south side. From the south, everything from, and actually, another one, which is from the porch. Those four collect a lot of water. They, because the other ones are just catching from the porch. Those could go on some kind of buried pipe. I don't know how to size something like that.
Well, if we could, and if it's, if there's an approval, maybe a condition could be that you could work with us to build something in the south side for that half of the building.
We are good with that.
All right, because every little bit will help.
I think what you're suggesting is running a pipe that's perforated.
That's right.
And running towards here.
That's exactly.
We are fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
There are several questions, though, about the driveway and where it's going and the encroachment into the right-of-way. I really needed to talk to an engineer in regards to this, not the architect. I'm sorry, Mr. Passman.
It's okay.
But these are questions not for you.
Yes.
So...
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not sure an engineer would have the answer to that question either. It's a pre-existing use that we have over this right-of-way. It's the only access that we have to the property. We are continuing...
So that's the case, though. Don't they need some type of approval from the city in any regards to this, Donna, or no?
It's just the street.
Clearly, the street is allowed to...
It's unimproved.
It's unimproved.
Right.
So it's muddy and it's their risk of, you know, getting muddy to get to their property.
You don't get a basement or something?
There's no requirement from the city to give them some type of design, or not design exception, but an agreement for them to encroach on the city right-of-way?
They're not encroaching on the right-of-way.
They're not?
Everything they're doing is outside of the right-of-way except for this little piece of driveway, which, just like everybody else's house, their driveway, you know, where it crosses over the sidewalk... Until it gets to the street. Is in the right-of-way, but it's not in the street.
Right.
So that's typically permitted encroachment, yeah.
I'm a little confused about something. I'm not sure if anybody else is. Proposed elevations at the top of the page, you have an accessory structure and you have all the...
There's a shed.
That is separate from the addition that's going to be the writing studio.
That's correct. It's an accessory shed structure.
Uh-huh, and where is that?
Where is it?
Yes.
It's in the southeast corner. It's rectangle.
No.
It's here in the upper corner. It's got the proper setbacks, it's only got a few feet, so conforms with the board design. That's just for garden, you know, storage, equipment and whatnot. Maybe a apple wood.
And it's technically in the backyard.
In compliance.
Sorry, it's written so small it couldn't see.
Have you, I'm sorry, have you approached the city to see if you can acquire that piece of land?
We haven't, excuse me, we have. We were told that the city wants to maintain access directly to the lake. But, as I think the professionals had mentioned, this is the city right-of-way that we're permitted to use like anyone else in the public.
And in addition to that, if they were to attempt that, typically, right-of-ways are split in half, and they're given to the property on either side. So if the one on the other side isn't interested, well, the city's probably not interested in half the right-of-way. So they probably wouldn't want to approve that anyway.
Well, I don't know about that. Because if they want to maintain a public access to the waterfront.
They could do it in the other half.
They could keep the other half.
So they maybe have the potential to take half the right-of-way.
Was it a formal, did you formally approach the city?
No.
Or it was a casual question?
It was a casual question.
Um, does anybody have information about the status of the wetland verification and the transition area?
We spoke to a environmental consultant about handling those issues if they come up. And we plan on hiring him if those issues come up. He had mentioned that it's possibly covered under a general permit. It's not in the wetlands, it's just in the buffer. So, we were anticipating hiring him if that issue came up.
Is the wetland verification still valid?
I don't know. But again, that would be an issue as to whether it comes up.
Sure, it's an outside agency condition, yeah.
There's still the question of where this fence is located in the right-of-way, and.
Well, it's not a question, it is in the right-of-way.
So, I mean, who addresses that? Not you, Mr. Passman, so.
Does the applicant agree to relocate the fence out of the right-of-way?
Or if they acquire a piece of the property, and they go to the right-of-way?
But again, that, they would have to appear before the council, and.
Right.
To the extent that the fence encroaches on the right-of-way, yes, we will remove it.
So I need to understand again, where exactly will the carpet park? Is that going to be parked in front of the house now?
There. It's hard to describe what's in front of the house, it's like on the street side.
Right, in the inside corner between the garage and the front of the actual house. So it's technically the front yard.
Right.
Which is one of the similar things they need. And so, it'll be a small pad, right near the front steps, their new front steps to their new porch. And on one side will be the side of the garage, and on the other side will be this new walkway that goes to their new front steps. But yeah, it'll technically be.
In the front yard.
The front yard space between the.
But it doesn't sound like we have much choice, though, Donna.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like there's much choice, putting it anywhere else.
That's really the only place they've got left, yeah.
I mean, the body of the two-story portion of the house is just at the 25-foot setback. So, we're important, we're in the front yard setback, which is not according to the ordinance, so. That's about the only place left.
And will the pathway to the new parking spot remain dirt and gravel? Or you're not allowed to pave that?
We wouldn't modify it, because it's not our property. It's the city's right-of-way.
So the, the passage, the driveway to the parking spot would then obviously curve much tighter from Dunleavy to the right to get to that parking spot?
Correct.
That's right.
And you don't, you don't have a drawing of that at this point, right?
Well, on the site plan, I mentioned that there's proposed gravel driveway, proposed, that gets you to that parking spot, and the existing gravel driveway is going to be removed. And there's some shading that shows the removal portion of that. So it's kind of trading it from here to there.
Right, okay.
With gravel in the right-of-way.
So, if I understand, there's going to be a new concrete pad in front of, in front, the front of the house? No?
No.
The garage, the writing studio.
Well, which is going to be part of the house.
Yes.
It's not a garage anymore.
Okay. Dunleavy ends with a curb, almost like a small cul-de-sac. That's where, it ends there. At the end of that, there's a concrete apron, typical of an apron of a driveway, that's there. And then it ends, and then it turns into gravel. That apron, our plan is to leave it, not to cut a new curb cut into it.
Okay.
Leave that.
And then swerve around.
Right.
Make a hard.
A hard turn, and a back out, you know, it's gravel, it's compacted. It's still drainable material. Right, I mean, not easy. This was.
I understand it's an unusual-shaped house.
It's very hard. I never saw it.
Okay, I have an idea.
It hit me, Jerry.
Would you consider adding a little more stone in the right-of-way? So that you can kind of, yeah, have a spot to back up to.
Yes.
And drive out instead of backing out of it.
Yes.
Kind of like that? Kind of like that?
Yeah, make it more.
No, like, more like a.
Like a traditional.
What you drew is, yes.
Like this?
Yeah, there you go, right. Right, as tight as you can to make it work. So we're not disturbing the least amount of property. In other words, then they could come, like, back in out of a garage or parking space, they back straight out. And they, they back this way, and then they pull straight out. So they're not backing out of your driveway, it's very tight.
The exact difference of a K-turn.
Right.
Correct, and we agree.
The safest thing. So, that is something that you guys could consider. I think that should be a condition of approval also.
Yes.
And that makes a little more sense.
It would make things safer also.
We agree it makes sense, and we agree to do it.
Agreed.
Any other questions for Mr. Passman or Mr. Cromer?
Well, how do we finalize the concern in Donna's report about the wetlands?
It's just an outside agency condition, they would have to.
And they follow up with you, or, like?
Construction.
How do we find out about it, make sure that it's okay?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we're called. We'll come out and look if we're called.
It would be part of the standard conditions, let's say, any outside approvals that we need for construction. But if it's not required, then we just keep moving along.
But we need that proof. Wouldn't somebody need that proof that from the D E P or something?
Before they issue a permit, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're all on the same page about.
Would the zoning department need it, or the construction department?
Zoning. Because you have to get a zoning permit before you get a construction permit.
Right, I would think that we just get it subject to the improvements, okay.
If it's, if it still, if it makes sense to make a formal request to acquire a piece of that property.
Well, that's not really our purview, though.
Resolve some of the issues if it, if it were an applicant's property.
Mr. Beegland, what is your, what do you say in regards to?
There was a question about whether it could possibly be a condition of variance, but now you wouldn't be able to build that as a condition of the variance, so. You're strictly looking at the winter applications here.
Right.
Even if approval was given for the project the way it is now, the way they propose it, they could still go to the city, the mayor council, and request half of the right-of-way. Maybe it's granted, maybe it's not. But, that would clean up all these little issues that we're all talking about, about improvements in the right-of-way. It's not going to change the parking and the drainage.
But is that something that we can make as a condition?
You can't make it a condition.
Right.
But if they were to approach the city about doing the vacation, then they would have more room.
Doesn't it alleviate, does it alleviate at least one of the variance requests?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it would definitely alleviate, right.
But, but what we've said is that you can't, you know, you can't use that as a reason to either approve or deny the variance request. You have to take the conditions that exist, and if they meet the criteria under the C1, right?
Correct, yep.
Then they meet the criteria soon, then you balance whether there's negative criteria impact. If they negate that, which it seems like they have, with the way they're going to configure the driveway, and they've created a new parking space to offset the parking space, they're technically losing the garage, you know, all the other things, you know, if that, if that satisfies, in your minds, the positive and negative criteria for all those deficiencies, you know, it doesn't matter if they approach the city about getting a street vacation.
It certainly might benefit them in the future to make that approach. I mean, it would add more land to an area which could certainly use it on that sort of property.
Essentially, though, we're not requiring it, so.
It would also make their fence legal.
Right, I understand.
Just a thought.
I can't go down that path, only because it doesn't make sense to, so.
Any further questions for Mr. Passman or Mr. Cromer? Board professionals?
No.
I'll open it up to the public for questions regarding Mr. Cromer's testimony. Anybody in the public that would like to ask Mr. Passman questions, rather? No? Okay.
I don't have much of a great closing statement. I think the planner had mentioned well that we had addressed whatever negative consequences there are from this application, and that due to the unique restrictions associated peculiarly with this property, we fit within the C1 variance, so we ask that the board.
Well, before you finish your final statement, Mr. Cromer, I have to actually see if anybody has any comments for this application first.
Oh, I thought that's what you said, I'm sorry.
First it was questions, now it's comments. Anybody in the public have any comments, either in favor or against this application? Seeing none, I will close public session. Now you can make your final statement, Mr. Cromer.
Oh, thank you. This was the moment I was waiting for.
Did somebody raise their hand?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cromer.
I don't have anything to add. I think that we've presented an application that fits within the requirements, and we ask that the board approve it, thank you.
All right, I appreciate that. All right, so deliberation from the board? Anybody have any comments to make?
I think this was a tough situation to make any sort of improvements. I appreciate what they, how you've gone about making them, and the care that's gone into doing it to make this space livable. So I just appreciate the effort that went into this, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. I think you guys did a really, really great job at figuring out how to, how to really make this property shine. And I'm, I'm, I'm all for, I mean, it's so tucked away in a little pocket that no one sees. If you were asking for these things for, for a house on, you know, Grand Avenue, you probably wouldn't be getting them. But in this unique situation, I think it's an incredible improvement.
I agree with that.
Anybody else for comment on the board? Okay, so, do we have a vote, either in favor or against?
I would vote, I'd make a motion to vote in favor of this application.
I would second it with these conditions, if we can review them and put them on the record.
Sure, so the conditions that you had would be to work with the board engineer to build something on the south side to help with drainage, is that accurate?
Yep.
And then, also, the footprint of the driveway should follow the shape of, or with a K-turn, so that it assists with ingress egress, and then also any type of outside agency approval, which is, you know, of course, that'll also be part of the condition.
That covers the D E P.
Correct.
And the fence has to be removed.
Oh, I'm sorry, and the fence does also have to be removed.
So there's four conditions, correct?
Four conditions.
Roll call, Marie?
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
J.J. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Avaloni?
Yes, and good luck with your renovations.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see the finished product.
Chris, do you want to do a five-minute?
Yes, I'm going to make a 10-minute recess for changing of the guard as I'm refused from 8th Avenue. All right, I think if everyone's in the room, we'll start this. Do you call roll, please?
And I will now derael call. Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
Jill Potter?
Here.
Natalie Passerini?
Here.
And J.J. Hall?
Here.
I will be acting as chairman this evening because Mr. Scully is away. Is there any housekeeping that we, oh, the application of 301 8th Avenue continuation? Is there any housekeeping we need to address before we start?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just, there were some additional exhibits that were circulated to everyone. I just want to have those marked, if you don't mind, for a few minutes, just to get those together. I know that Mr. Carr has submitted a brief, I believe, around 8/8, as it relates to applicants' markings, so with that, we'll just use 8/8. There was also additional items that were submitted from the zoning file. We'll just mark those in order, as it relates to the information, just mark those B1. The deed recording, the deed that were reported, provided, B2. The O P R S tax data dated 9/2/225, that is B3. 2000 zoning permit, 1916 replaced door or window, mark those B4. The 2003 deed from Tate to 7th Street is B5. We have 2004 deed, 7th Street Associates, is B6. 2005 deed, 7th Street Associates, is B7. Removal, the zoning permit, 7488, roof replaced, siding is B8. Another zoning permit, 1164 roof, is B9. Zoning permit, 201, 20162, porch roof, B10. 2021 deed, Parrot Farming, the 11th. Deny the application, 2024 is B12. C C H planning report, was that a little pre-marked?
Usually they are.
Yeah, usually it's pre-marked, so we'll skip that.
Yeah, it's important, so.
And then the 2023 subquote permit, C23, 1002 is B13. Those are all the other additional exhibits that were, the documents that were circulated for everybody to review. And that's all I have for the cleanup, just to, Mr. Carr?
Yeah, just to respond to that, I've taken a look at these exhibits. By the entry of Carr as behalf of Karen May and Sherman Yon, the applicants in this matter. As it pertains to these, I would argue that there's, with regard to the deeds, I dispute in terms of the relevance, and without testimony explaining the relevance, also with the number of these documents. By way of example, there's a permit that I have as exhibit 11, makes reference to 1703 Webster, as do a number of the applications and permits within this exhibit set. Those are the back building, that's the Carrus app. That's not the portion of the property that we are talking about relative to this particular application. In turn, I would argue that that too is irrelevant absent any testimony or evidence to reflect whole purpose of bringing that into the record. But, so anything having to do with 1703 within this entire list, I would object to as a rule. With that being said, I submit to this decision.
Joe and I are just wanting some clarification. This is the third time we're hearing this application, correct? There've been two previous?
This is the third time.
Third time.
I was correct.
And everyone here is up, everyone here is up to speed on?
Everyone here is everyone that has been here.
Everyone here is everyone that's up, okay, thank you.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we're gathering something.
So for order, if you want to, Mr. Carrus can speak to the brief that he submitted, any type of additional testimony he wants to give, or any type of arguments as it relates to what was left at the last meeting. I believe one of the primary things was the brief submission that the board had requested, that council had requested at that time. We also have Solanz up here this evening, she can answer any questions as it comes from the zoning aspect of what was submitted, and if there's anything that needs to be further evaluated on that theme after the study. So you can start off with Mr. Carrus and let me go.
Okay. Has everything been cleared up with escrow?
I'm sorry, I meant to comment on that. I know that Mr. Carrus was given the detailed invoice this evening. I know last week there was a couple of.
We've given a rundown.
Rundown.
But there are certain invoices that we do need to review that I do not believe we have. So we'll get that, and we'll take care of the escrow. That I'm not worried about, because depending upon what happens tonight, if you agree with me, we're obviously done. If we don't, we come back, because it is bifurcated on the details of it. So either way, we'll take it.
So, Mr. Chair, just speak to, also to Mr. Solanz before I, it is more of a unique situation, you know, typically you'd probably want a carrier matter, because if it's denial, they would not be back, that's the type of case of application. But if they would be back seeking for possibility to approval of the variance, I don't see it issued proceeding.
Sounds good. Mr. Carrus, floor is yours.
Thank you. As requested by the board at the last hearing, we had submitted a brief back in August, August 4, 2025, to the Board Attorney Jack Serpica, copied to the Board Secretary. Prior to that, all the evidence and testimony that we intended to submit had been submitted. We have no further testimony tonight, we have no further documentary evidence that we will be presenting. My arguments are pretty much laid out within that brief. I really don't have much to add. I'll just briefly go through, you know, we're here for an interpretation, we're talking about adding basically decking and railing on what we submit is an existing roof deck based upon the evidential record going back to 2002. Photos, documentary evidence to reflect that. The other point that we make as pertains to the statute, when we look at, we're statute here in Asbury Park, the land use statute, as we set for it in our brief, it has in there that no building premises on the nonconforming use. This is a nonconforming use, as indicated, we are within the R2 zone. However, this is a multifamily property, it's condo, it has seven units within the property, indicates cannot be enlarged, extended, reconstructed, substituted, altered. Respectfully, based upon what has been proposed, adding decking and railing, we're not looking to do that. It also provides in section P of the ordinance that you can strengthen, you can restore, you can make it a safer lawful condition. Adding decking is restoring, protecting. Adding railing is for a lawful purpose and a safe purpose. The other thing I would like to bring out is, I mentioned at the prior hearing, that there is a land use ordinance, 30-73.12, that pertains to open space, that requires 30% of the area. Importantly, it says the open space requirement may be met with means of common interior recreation areas, balcony's roof decks or terraces. It pertains to all multifamily residences, it doesn't limit it to those in which it is a permitted use. So all multifamily within the entire area of Asbury Park, you're required to have 30%. It does not say how impervious coverage. And when you look at the definition of open space, it talks about dedicated to the use of D residents. Evidence was presented that they are way under, on this particular property, of the open space requirement. By adding this roof deck, it would increase, you're still not needing it, but you're certainly increasing the amount of open space available to the tenants in this multifamily residence. So by doing this, you're actually trying to get into compliance, statutory requirements here in Asbury Park, you're not violating those requirements. All that is set forth in the brief I submitted. Again, all my other arguments are contained within that brief, and that I do submit.
Okay.
Any questions the board wants to ask of Mr. Carrus?
Yeah, you're taking the position that open space is satisfied, whatever, that an area can be included in open space, whether or not it is available to all residents of the property?
That is correct, because when it talks about open space here, it talks about balconies. Certainly, if you have a balcony on a unit, it's usually off of one particular, you know, veteran, it's not going to be available to everybody. It does not limit it to everybody being able to use that balcony, but just the residents within the unit have open space.
I don't know, I don't know. Do you have something to support that?
Just looking at the plain language, how it's set forth in here in the ordinance.
A balcony be, a balcony could be a balcony that goes completely around the building. We talk about, you refer to a roof deck, that is something generally accessible to the occupants of it. I'm just trying to understand.
I agree with you on that. It could be, but it doesn't limit it to that. That's a point I agree with.
I don't know, okay. Mike?
Maybe trying, you know, trying to shape the question for what the board's looking for as opposed to the ordinance. You know, basically, you're looking at, can the board rely on ordinance section 30-73.112, open space on space, without consideration of other provisions of the City of Asbury Park Land Bill regulations, municipal code chapter 30, grant relief to the applicant without roof deck on dwellings. So that's really where your analysis is going to come in. The facts were presented, the brief was presented, the law was presented. Now you're looking to make that determination.
I just, I feel like I read your brief, seen all the information we have, I've seen the timeline. I just think that your brief is really conclusionary in saying that this is not an expansion of a nonconforming use. I just feel that you haven't given us enough meat. So if you want to say something about that now, I just say, with all the words and all the pictures, I just don't know how you get around that.
Well, when you, the evidence reflects that we have presented that this is a roof deck that had been in existence since at least 2002. Was it used all the time? No. But when you look at how you define abandonment, within the whole body of cases, there has been an intent of abandonment.
But I think the.
I'm sorry.
The applicant, when she testified, told us she went on it once. So it doesn't even seem to have been something that has been used as a roof deck. It was a roof without railings, without any protection, and even though a permit was obtained in 2004, 2005, in 20 years since and before, nothing was ever done. So I don't, A, I don't know how it's not abandoned, but B, I don't understand how you can give us facts or state that there are facts to show that this was a roof deck in use. It's the covered, or the open part of the covered roof below. I just, I don't ever see it as roof, that it's been used as roof deck.
It actually, when you look at the cave slot, you don't have to use it at all in order for it not to be banned. There's a case going back years ago, having to do with courses, and it hadn't, and it's paddock area, which hadn't been used, I think for that period, it's like 14 years, at all for status. But the court found, Pell Division found, it was Pell Division, Supreme Court, but they had found in that case, there was no abandonment, because there had to be an intent, mere nonuse, we're concluded, is not equivalent to abandonment.
But I don't see that it was ever used as such, so how?
It doesn't have to.
You don't even get to that point.
It doesn't have to. Under that case, mere nonuse is not indicia of abandonment. There has to be affirmative steps to obtain it. And here, there were no affirmative steps, the door remains, whether they went on once, or they went on twice, or they're being on multiple times, is not indicia of abandonment. There has to be actual physical abandonment in order to find abandonment under that case law. And there's a whole body of case that fell.
So the fact that it's, excuse me, so the fact that it's there does not tell the person who owns the house that they have to use it. It's almost like telling somebody, you got a backyard, but I'm not telling you to go out in. Okay.
And one of the questions that you're faced with with regards to this interpretation, you know, did the property have a roof deck when individuals was given the certificate of nonconformity to develop it? So, you know, that's part of the equation, and then the other portion relates to the ordinance section 30-73.
And that's actually the key. The certificate of nonconformity, our position is, if you're issuing a certificate of nonconformity for the site, includes everything. You don't just limit, well, this is nonconforming, this isn't. Our position is, you look at the entire site, and whatever is there that is nonconforming, the master deed that we had submitted, that evidence actually identifies this particular roof deck as a roof deck. It calls it out, it has a diagram of it, and it says it's a roof deck.
But that's not a document that anyone else approved, other than the developer who converted the building. And I still do not think that it specifically, it may refer to the entire number of units as nonconforming in that area, but it is not focused on that alleged roof deck, and I just feel like you haven't, you keep saying the words, but you haven't shown us anything to convince us that it should be as you say it.
The deed from 2004 explicitly states that it is.
But that's a deed by the developer.
No, 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 it's a recorded deed with the county. It's not just of the developer.
But they don't review it for its content.
But it's evidential as to the existence.
No, no.
That it was a roof deck back in 2004, right around the time that the certificate was given.
No. No, I don't know how, you just, you just can't leapfrog there.
And that's part of your analysis as to how, you know, your opinion of your.
I'm just, I'm asking, I'm asking for something more than assertions, and I am, that's all. And I'm just trying to keep saying that I don't hear that I'm getting any.
I'm referencing part of the evidential record, and my pardon is based upon what is in that evidential record.
So was there ever, does anybody know when the door was put in to this roof deck or roof states?
Do we have a photograph that we had submitted from listening back then that shows that door?
Back when?
I believe it's 2002.
Okay, so the door has been there, has there ever been a permit to close the door, make it a window?
There was an application, but it was never done.
So there was an application, or there was a permit to abandon the use, or, or no, want to make sure?
There was an application to change it as part of the documents that went in, but they decided not to, because of the evidence that they decide not to abandon.
Just to confirm, your clients or prior?
Prior.
Okay, the prior owner. So there's a door on the second floor, we either say, okay, or in this interpretation, right, like not even going into the specific roof deck, right, because you can't really do that, that's not what they're here for, they're just going to interpret whether or not this is an expansion of the nonconforming use based on the ordinance that was presented. So regardless of whether we agree on whether they should be able to use it or not, I think that's kind of moot. I think we need to get to the meat of, can they utilize it underneath this ordinance? Then I don't really see how they could, and if there's a door there. I mean, there's no railing, but there's a door, why would there just be a window? I just, I'm not adding up for me either.
And it looked like at some point, there was an application to change all the windows, right? This was going to be included as a change of windows at some point? There's some, there's some application in here for that?
I don't see that.
Excuse me, Mr. Carrus, I think your client wants your attention.
No, no, I'm just, I'm trying to check the computer.
Okay, I didn't know if you wanted to give him some information. No, no, I just didn't know if you needed to communicate with him.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Usually people. Go one step further, Wendy, to just to, to your point, right, like, you know, she said she only went out there once. I mean, Donna had already said that if there is no railing, or whichever it may be, right, if there's no railing, they don't really want them out there anyway, for safety. But they're trying to be within the guidelines, whether we interpret it for or against them, they want to move forward with it. So I think, again, it's kind of moot with there being a door, and there's no, it's a door, you know, there's a door to an outdoor area with no safety, and you just walk off. So, I mean, for me, I'm looking at it, and it's interpreted as such, I mean, I don't really see it another way.
I mean, it's kind of like, it's like, okay, it's in the deed, nice selling point for somebody, but nobody ever investigated, and we all keep talking about how it's unsafe, and nobody would go out there without railings and a better flooring of some sort or another, whether it's fireless or something else.
Right.
Somebody just decided to slap a label on it for sales purposes and say, oh, it's a, it's a deck.
Well, I think that the door means it's a deck. I mean, I don't think that there'd be a door to a roof without there being the intent of there being a deck.
So, J.J., that's your position? Because it was hard to hear you from behind, that your interpretation is that it's, it's appearing like because the door, whether or not there's use.
Correct, I mean, there's no.
The intent is for it to be a deck. I agree. I, that's my stance as well. My interpretation is that the purpose for it is to be utilized as a deck, with the door, the permit, the history that gets laid out, that that was the intent of that.
So what is the door leading to? The door, the door has to lead to something, okay? That, that's, I hate to make stuff complicated, I'm the simple person up here. The door is leading to something. What is it leading to? And what has been said that it was leading to is it was leading to a deck. Forget that it ain't no railing on it, okay? There's no railing there, but she will make that improvement, that there will be a railing. And I'm not telling you what to say, but I would say, if I were doing it, I would say, I make it an improvement to my deck, the door has been there, okay? And just because I don't walk out that door, doesn't mean that that door doesn't have a purpose. I have a back porch, I never go down the steps to the backyard. Why? Because they're too steep for me, as I get 74. So I said, I'm not using that, I'm using the other door, okay? So I can't dictate to you how you use your property, as long as it's there. And I think it's dangerous when we step to the point where we start dictating people to how to use something that has existed, okay? It has existed, it had a purpose, she has said she wants to make the improvement on that purpose, so let's stop picking at her for the fact that there's no railing there. She says she'll put one there.
But they could not.
It looked.
They could not have used it as a deck if it didn't have an adequate floor and proper railings, because it never would have gotten code approval. So why can we say that this is a continuation of a nonconforming use when it would not have gotten a CO?
But how did they get a CO with a door? There was a door.
They have a CO.
It did.
Otherwise, you would have said that they have to remediate that.
I don't know, there are a lot of things I have questions about, but I don't know if this is the time to bring this up. But I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, to go to one step. This is being submitted as an interpretation. And I hope that everybody on this board understands the impact. And maybe Michelle Alonso wants to.
If you look at every application on each, each application.
And to that moment, Wendy, like I see that this one's a little different than others that have come before us with balconies that have already been done. And now they're coming before us because there's issue. I see this one very differently from those situations. Just to share your viewpoint, like.
No, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that, maybe I'm not explaining myself clear.
So maybe just also assist with regards to the board. First off, are we asking questions in council still? Are we doing deliberations? Where are we?
Well, I'm going to ask the question.
And then you can also, let me just remind everybody too, you can also ask Ms. Alonso anything as it relates to the zoning aspect of this as well. She's here this evening.
Which we will, I mean, I'd like to, but. You had a choice when you were bringing this, to bring it as an interpretation or as an application for a variance.
I do.
And specifically, why did you choose the interpretation?
Because that's a decision that I made with my client. We did both, we bifurcated. It's, there is an application also for a D2. It's bifurcated pending a determination on the interpretation.
Yes, but this is what you wanted to pursue first. And would you share with us?
Because there's no reason to get a D2 variance if there's an interpretation we don't need. I don't need a D2 variance if the board decides that it's unnecessary. I don't have to go through the proof. Different set of plates.
Russell, do you have any?
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence about this one. I, I, I understand what Wendy is saying, and I don't think there's a lot of clarity with the interpretation. I would have preferred to see this come as a D variance and ask for an expansion of a non-conforming. I think that would have been easier and cleaner. So I, I'm not fully convinced on the interpretation. I'm not necessarily opposed to them ultimately developing this and using it as a deck. But I'm not sure that I'm fully convinced on the interpretation part.
Could Michelle speak to us? Is that time now or?
Maybe you have some questions for Ms. Alonso, certainly.
Do we need to swear her in?
Yes, please, if you can also, can you get to the left?
Am I correct? She's testifying, she's subject for us.
Correct. Swear affirm the testimony about to give the truth of all truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name of the record, please.
Michelle Alonso, Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park and a Licensed Professional Planner and the Chief Zoning Official for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Alonso.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any light that you'd like to share on the situation?
Well, I do want to make some corrections. Yes, there is a door there. That is a historic door. That door, well, it was, predates before this was a multifamily. So it was a multifamily first and then became a condominium. As the document, you have a lot of documents. You know, this came for, to this, not this group, this board, but to the zoning board for a certificate of compliance as a non-conforming use. And it received that shortly after it became a condominium association, which is not, never comes to a zoning office. But the, there is a difference between the zoning permits and the actual construction permits. And they don't match up per se. There was a zoning permit approval in 2002 to do a railing, but there was never a construction permit pulled for that.
Correct.
Correct. And since then, there's been re-roofing done. At some point, there's evidence, in my opinion, that there was a pitched roof on this porch.
I would object, unless there is documented evidence or his personal knowledge as to that, that should be stripped.
Okay, strike it. I'm going to say that the siding on the front of the house does not go all the way down to the roof. But then also, one of the more recent permits was to re-roof, there's actually a few re-roofings, to re-roof that roof. Well, it was made flat. It was roofed with material that is listed in the construction permit that is not for walking. So.
Unless you have evidence, unless you qualify yourself as to an expert in construction, as to what you can walk on, what you can't walk on, again, I'm going to move it straight.
Let's clarify, what's the, what's the material that's used?
It's in here. I don't, I don't have the full printout of 195 pages, but is the, when the last construction permits. And it's, what I did was I Googled the material.
That's not an evidence?
From, because it's a brand name.
Is it the EPD of them?
Yes.
All right, so I think the last hearing, what I did here is that there was, it was conceded that that is roof material, correct, Mr. Kams? Because you came from here, right?
On, but I need to know which permit and which part of the roof. Because if you're looking at one of the last exhibits, as she indicates, the one I have, that's the last exhibit, is exhibit 13 that has on there a porch roof. But that refers to 1703 web. Again, that's the back problems. I need to see the documents which you refer.
It's the, it's the Oprah that you received of the list of construction permits. And it is the very last list in the list of construction permits. I'll let you take a minute to pull that up. No, it's in the first pages.
I know, but.
It's, it's of the exhibits actually. Permit information, it's item number one.
Just waiting for my computer to boot up. And that's from 2012. As I indicate, what I have is zoning permit application for 2012. Unless you can show me a different one, indicates that 1703 web.
No, this is from the construction department.
Okay.
This is, this was, this was also sent as an Oprah.
Again, I have the date on here that install EPDM roof. It has 65, 2012. I'm looking at the zoning application that's since 65, 2012. And that says 1703 web, so that's a different building.
No, this did not come from my office.
Then can you show me the permit that's referring to?
This is not a zoning permit, this is a construction permit.
Okay, so this one, we're looking at a zoning permit from 519, 2012 that says install first and latest IPM from roof. But I would need clarification because, again, the zoning permit of the two front applications. Okay, so which one is this as?
That's the application, page one is the actual permit. Scroll up.
There's the permit.
Okay. And those are both for three and one.
Okay, so it's EPM that's on this, so it's on both. That's what we need documented evidence or somebody to testify that you can't walk on that type of roof.
And on the list, there is also not an application for the railing to go with it. Oh. But my statement of that, it goes more about that the zoning permitting, because even though there was a zoning permit issued in 2000, in the early 2000s, there were subsequent, you know, permits from subsequent zoning officers that denied the roof deck because of the expansion of the non-conforming use.
And the change in the ordinance.
And the change in the ordinance. I also, if you would, also want to refer to the open space requirement. The open space requirement is a recent requirement that was in the last round of zoning changes. It was not there at the creation of the multifamily. It does typically, so it would not pertain to this non-conforming structure because it's grandfathered. There is no requirement of my office to impose the open space requirement. But I also want to state that the open space requirement does not trump other legalities that need to, of, of the condition that we have here. The porch is in the front yard setback. And for that, we would never say you must put, create the open space on this non-conforming element of the structure.
So I thought front porches were not part of the front yard setback in Asbury Park?
Front porches, as defined as a porch, can encroach in the front yard setback if they're defined on porch. But a porch must be a one-story structure. Open one-story structure. I actually have, I printed out separately the definition of the porch. That's the thing. It says one story in height, which projects beyond the main building. So the increase of the railing on the roof deck increases the height and then it's no longer a porch and cannot be encroaching in the front yard setback.
No, no, as far as height, you don't measure to the top of the railing. That's not how you measure. You measure to the roof. You never measure height to the top of the railing. Even when you look at multifamily buildings, you don't even include the parapet. You go up to the roof line and then you have the parapet, so that's.
No, that's an interpretation on its own.
That's not an interpretation, that's within your ordinance.
Regardless, the part of the front of the building that is enclosed is not a porch. And that is non-conforming for the front yard setback.
Wait, say that again.
You have a portion, because I have a photo.
Of the front porch that are actually in the porch. So they're not on the porch.
That's a system.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not porch.
So this is a non-conformity into the front yard setbacks.
But you got a certificate of non-conformity allowing for it.
Yeah, you can't expand it.
Right, once.
Well, our position is you're not expanding, the effect's successive.
Right, it's an interpretation and that goes to the base.
We're asking for an interpretation, that it's not an expansion, it's successive.
But the railing and the use of that space. So this received the certificate of non-conformity as a multifamily without the roof deck.
You don't know that, it doesn't say it. Where does it say in a certificate of non-conformity it excludes the roof deck?
So yeah, let's, let's also refocus real quick. Mr. Kams, if you could wave for cross-exam.
Sure.
And Ms. Alonso, finish. What do you want to say then while I'm, Mr. Kams, take a cross-exam for questions?
No, no, because, no, because you articulated very well for me, Donna, about, about, yes, there's a portion that, so that's non-conforming. The non-conforming certificate is for the structure as it, as it was. When you have a non-conforming use and structure, after you receive that certificate, you're not just permitted in the future to expand it. Like if, the same as if you, if you're not allowed to build an addition here without coming back to the board. And again, the interpretation of my office and my, my last zoning officer was that this is an expansion because it's the increase of space, usable space. So that is my office's interpretation. That's the expansion of the non-conforming use and that is why you made the, you made an application for an interpretation.
May I cross-examine?
Yes.
If you had, if you had a rear deck and it had no rail, would it be considered an expansion of an, and?
Had no safety railing.
It had no safety railing. All right, an existing deck, it had no safety rail. Would you be allowed to put a railing on there for safety purposes?
It would need a railing for safety purposes and shouldn't be built without one.
If you buy a house and it has a deck and it has no railing, would you be allowed to put railing on for safety purposes?
Not necessarily. But a deck is a wrong example because we don't continue.
No, no, I'm talking about a rear deck of a house. If you buy a house that has an existing rear deck, would you be allowed to put on a rail?
Why do you think it's a deck?
But that's what, yeah.
But no, no, please do not feed her answers.
But you're just, you're using a conclusively word.
Please don't, let me cross-examine.
That nobody's established in fact that it's a deck.
If you have a wooden structure on the back of the house with planks on it, structurally examined, and it protrudes from the back of the house, does not have a roof, would you allow, would you allow to put railings on it?
Maybe not necessarily because it depends on the condition of the property. Is it in the setback area? Isn't, and it?
If it's in the setback area, it's an existing wooden deck without a railing, would you be allowed to put railings on it? There's a door leading out to it on the back of the property, no railings when you buy it, would you be allowed to put railings on it?
On the zoning end or the construction end?
Would you be permitted under this zoning?
Under, not necessarily.
Under what circumstances would you not necessarily be allowed to do that?
If the deck was not built legally.
If it was built legally, would you be allowed to do it?
Is it a replacement of a railing because of rot? Or is there no railing? Because if there's no railing, it's not legal.
If there's no railing and it had been existing there for 100 years, would you be allowed to put a railing on it?
Maybe, maybe not. Again, it is not the same circumstance.
If you, if you, if the height requirement, they changed the legal requirements that at a certain height, you have to put railings where it did not exist before. But now it requires it, would you have, would you be allowed to put railings on it?
If it was a legal conforming deck, yes.
Well, if it's an existing deck on a house that was legally built, had no railings, code requires there be railings, can you put those railings?
I'm going to repeat, it depends because decks fall, because decks fall under different provision as an accessory structure. And it really depends on the circumstance. If we find the accessory structure was not built legally.
I'm, I'm giving you the example that was built legally. It has no railings on it. Can you put railings on it?
For safety?
Correct.
If it's legal, yes.
Thank you. Can you replace, if the decking has rotting, can you replace the decking?
If it's legal?
Proceed.
If it's a legal deck, yes.
Thank you, no further questions.
Just, everybody, please be reminded too, let's keep the record clear. I'm not trying to talk over one another. Questions will be asked and answered and, you know, we'll get to questions that need to be addressed. But let's just, again, keep the focus, okay?
One further question. Doesn't the zoning code permit, as it refers to non-conforming uses, that you are allowed to restore or strengthen unsafe conditions?
You need a permit. It needs to be, again, legal.
But it allows you to restore or strengthen unsafe conditions?
But not demolish.
Not asking about the question.
And not, no, because with this.
You have an existing legal use and there's a condition within that use that needs to be strengthened or needs to be made safe. Are you allowed to do that?
If it's not a full replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Alonso?
Can you expand? You said the, you made a comment earlier about the siding not going down to the deck. Can you explain what you mean by that?
Well, I did a site visit and again, it's not scientific, it's just me taking a look. When I took a look at the front facade, the horizontal siding did not go all the way down to the roof.
Well, how far does it go?
Goes to about right below the window.
And did you go up on the roof to measure it?
No, because I'm, I didn't ask permission to go on the property.
What type of siding is on there before?
Before? You mean the type of siding on the building now?
You said it doesn't go all the way down to the roof deciding?
No.
Do you know whether or not it ever went all the way down to the roof?
No.
Do you know whether or not that is a condition that's existed for over 50 years?
No, I don't, I didn't do that research.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Alonso from the board? Does, we open this to the public for questions? Is there anyone in the public that would like to ask Ms. Alonso questions about her testimony only? No? Okay, closing public comment.
So, again, right now, the board is going to be making interpretations relates to what's been presented. You know, some things to consider in your analysis. It's going to be, you know, does the property, well, first off, there's two arguments as it relates to what the applicant is seeking. Questions related to the existence is to ask the, so did the property have a roof deck in 2002? At the time, the certificate of nonconformity was issued. Do you feel yes, explain why, or do you feel no, explain why? Do the references in the master deed conclusively determine that the property had a roof deck in 2004? When the master deed was reported through the present date against anything, yes? Or now you're analyzing as to whether you feel that was relevant as it relates to what you're doing for this interpretation? Did the property receive a valid zoning permit in 2005 for the roofing deck, the roof deck and the railings? The property received a valid zoning permit in 2005 for a roof deck and railings? Did the applicant have an obligation to act on that zoning permit at that time? If the property received a valid zoning permit in 2005, does the zoning permit remain valid today? These are, you know, you've been discussing these periodically, but these are the focus now as it relates to what you're going to do for this interpretation.
They don't need to determine that personally.
With regards to whether, um, does it?
Whether it's science.
So.
Yeah, I respectfully, the last two questions, whether or not it's, remains active or whether or not it's relevant in terms of the interpretation. Well, I would argue it's relevant in terms of this historic, historical record, but I would agree with what they said, they expire after one year. So the last two questions, I would assert, are improper.
Okay. So we can strike those. Does the existence of a working door that provides ingress and egress to unit three from the location in question have any bearing on whether the property has a roof deck? Does the absence of a railing on the second story have any bearing on whether the property has a roof deck between the timeframe in question, 2002 and through 2025?
Could you say that again, please?
Sure. Does the absence of a railing on the second story have any bearing on whether the property has a roof deck between the timeframe in question, 2002 to 2025? Does the surface material on the roof have any impact in your decision as to whether this property has a roof deck?
I don't object to without any evidence as to the nature of the surface material and how it impacted the roof.
I think though, again, there was testimony that the material was the EDPM, correct?
Yeah, but there's no further testimony as to, you know, whether, the use of that EPDM, whether or not you can walk on it, whether or not it changes the fabric of the roof, there's no evidence of it.
Was there, did you also reveal that it is roofing material? I think that at the last meeting, what I heard from.
It, it was at some point, there's roofing material, but that, whether or not that has, you know, prevents people from utilizing, there's no evidence based upon the nature of the material.
Let me just ask them for clarification purposes. Typically, you come across EDPM when you do applications. Is it used in any way as a walkway or for deck material?
I don't. Just. Oh, I'm returning, I have, we have limited knowledge as to most things.
Do any of the zoning permits or construction permits issued after 2005 have any impact in your decision as to whether this property has a roof deck? Does the testimony from the applicant, the applicant's witness about their observations on how this location of the dwelling has been used have any bearing in your decision whether this property has a roof deck? This is basically the summary of what you're looking for that relates to, again, questions related to the existence and status of the roof deck from 2002 to the present. You can discuss those once you have a decision or if you have any other further questions related to those. We can move on to the secondary portion of Ms. Glass's argument related to Development Ordinance Section 30-73.12.
Just for clarification, depending upon the way they answer these questions, yes or no, it doesn't mean if they answer all yes, they have, all have to be yes to go one way, all no the other way. It's just considerations.
Considerations, that's all this is for now. Considerations as to what they should be looking for with this analysis so we can narrow the topics down and just, you know, make an informed decision. Also getting it on the record as to what your decision's going to be so that you have support as to which way you may go at the end.
Thank you. So, time for us to discuss. Should we go through each question and then, can we, can we do that again?
Yes, you want me to start from the top?
Yeah, we're going to need some help because you, you itemized quite a few.
Yeah, I can summarize it, but you went into great detail.
Okay, so sure, we can start at the top. Did the property have a roof deck in 2002 at the time this certificate was issued?
I believe there was intention for a roof deck, but I don't believe there was a roof deck.
I don't believe that there was a roof deck either. I don't think any evidence has been submitted, any factual information's been submitted to us to, for our basis that there was a roof deck.
That basically is your opinion, okay?
And the fact that there was a door there, I would say it was a deck.
I agree that that was the intention.
I also agree, I think it was a deck.
Do the references in the master deed conclusively determine that the property had a roof deck in 2004 where the master deed was reported?
I don't think it's conclusive, but I think it's a good indication.
Say that again, I'm sorry?
I don't think it's conclusive, I think it's a good indication.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the less part of what you said.
Good indication.
That it is a good indication, you said?
Yes.
She doesn't feel it's conclusive, but it does feel it's a good indication.
I do agree to that extent. I mean, typically, master deeds are prepared by title and they do thorough research as to what's there. So I would find it hard that they would put something that is not there. So I do think that it is enumerated.
I agree that that was the intention with the deed like JJ's saying and Natalie.
I, yeah, I believe that there was intention and I believe that there was roof access, but was there an actual deck?
Well, for the question, I believe it was just in regard to the master deed.
It was just the master deed.
I believe that the intention was there, yes.
My reading of the language of the deed was that it was a concept, but it was not realized. And so maybe there was this conception that there could be, but I think it still goes to the fact that it was not there at the time in question. It may have been a conception, but it was not a reality.
Does the existence of a working door that provides ingress and egress to unit three from the location in question have any bearing on whether the property has a roof deck?
Yes. Absent, Julia Balkany, yeah, I would believe that does have a bearing. There's a door to an open roof deck.
Right, again, the intention is for the use of that with the door, that something is going to be out there. So I'd say yes to that.
I don't think we'd be having this conversation if there wasn't a door there.
Correct.
Again, I think that the door was there as a possibility, but it does not ever indicate to me, doesn't lead to automatic conclusion that there was or was to be a deck there.
Doesn't that go to what the owner wants to do? Doesn't that go to what the owner wants to do?
Sorry.
That question you asked, right? Ms. Glassman, all due respect, okay? You're saying, you're trying to say that's how you feel, but what is more important to me is what did the owner feel, the applicant? What was, what was their vision? Not what is our vision, what is their vision? You're saying.
That, but that.
One rule, don't interrupt me when I'm talking.
That door preceded that order.
Interrupt me when I'm talking.
That door preceded the order.
You don't listen, that's why we have to argue.
Everyone else, let's get out of control, please.
Okay. We cannot impose, okay, our preferences on an applicant. We can tell him what's legal, what is illegal. He has presented evidence, Mr. Cass has presented evidence, Ms. Alonso has presented evidence, okay? They have gone back and forth, okay? We have listened to it, okay? But still, when you say there was a door, what did that door lead to? Well, this is what I think, this is what they think. But the most important thing is that we listen to the applicant. What did the applicant want to do?
And I just agree with you, I just disagree with you, that's all.
That's why we have hints.
All right. Has, have we satisfied that question? Okay, great.
Does the absence of a railing on the second floor have any bearing on whether the property has a roof deck between the timeframe in question?
Can you say that again, I'm sorry?
Sorry, does, does the absence of a railing?
Absence.
On the second story have any bearing as to whether the property has a roof deck between the period in question?
No.
No.
I'm going to say no.
Absence of a door, yes, railing, no. I think with, you know, the railing not being there, I think there's a lot of things that this board is asked to clean up about code or ordinances from days past, which the board does a great job. I, again, think that this railing, being there or not, has no bearing on there still being a door to a roof deck, in my opinion.
I think it does have a bearing. I, I just think if the door wasn't there and somebody says, you know, waves a magic wand and said, I want it to be this, it doesn't make it so. But the fact that there never was a railing, it is inconceivable in my mind that anyone could have legitimately called that piece of what I consider a roof to be a deck without a railing because there's probably no point in time where a railing on a second floor would not have been required for a space that was being used as a deck.
Devil's advocate, why did we allow a door then?
Sorry?
Devil's advocate, why did we allow a door then?
There's nothing that says this should be allowed.
Right, it could have been illegal.
I don't think we can provide more evidence at this point.
But when it was sold, it was called a deck. Okay, and when, when the applicant purchased it, she purchased it, I think, and this is what I think, I could be wrong, that she said it has a deck, okay? So once again, I'm trying to interpret what the lady said as, but I can only accept what she says, not what you said. Okay? I mean, I might say it's blue, you might say it's black, okay? So what?
Let's, let's, let's get back and focus on the questions. I do believe the absence of a railing is impactful. If there were existing railings there that the applicant wanted to have replaced, again, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So the absence of railings is, it's important to me. It was never fully realized, whatever the intention, it was never fully realized.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Does the surface material or the, have any impact in your decision as to whether the property has a roof deck? And again, as we spoke about earlier, now looking at so much the uses of certain materials, just the material that's wasn't in there?
Yes, I'd say yes.
I, yes.
I'm going to say it's inconclusive. We haven't dealt into what that fabric is for duration or foot traffic. That, it could, it could just be an underlayment and you build the deck on top of it. So I don't know that I have enough information to conclusively answer that question.
I agree with that.
I also.
I agree with that also. You know, I mean, I see people, I just watched a guy build, put a roof on a house across the street from me the other day. Guess what? They walked on the material.
Do any of the zoning permits or construction permits issued after 2005 have any impact in your decision as to whether the property has a roof deck?
Can you say that again, please?
Do any of the zoning permits or construction permits that were issued after 2005 have any impact as to whether you consider it a roof deck?
Can I just ask for clarification? The ones that were issued were permitting the roof deck to be constructed, is that correct? Just to refresh the record.
After 2005 was when one was issued for permitting the roof deck. Then there was the 2012 that was indicated there was replacement for the replacement of the roof with materials.
But we don't know what that roof was.
Not at the time.
Right. And then we have the denial in 2024.
Yes.
So can you ask the question again?
Do any of the zoning or construction permits that were issued since 2005 have any impact on your decision as to whether the property has a roof deck?
Unfortunately, because of the person who approved the permit in 2005, I have to say it does not affect my feelings about whether there was a deck there or not. I don't believe there was, no.
I, I, I think that the 2024 denial should be taken into.
Well, that's, that's the reason we're here, because.
Okay, well, I just said, it's important to my consideration, but not the one from 2005. So when you ask subsequent to 2005, yes, the 2024 denial does have an impact on this, on our, on my deliberation.
I think the denial is the reason that we're here. And that's why we're here to interpret it. Okay, so the denial is just a tool, a means towards the end, okay? If they had to say yes, we wouldn't be here. They said no, she has pursued it and we're trying to come to a conclusion now. Okay.
Any other comments?
I'm still uncertain because there, the permits are all over the place. There's an approval, there's an approval, there's a new roof without any indication of what kind of roof, and then there's a denial. So the, the history and the record is not clear as to what was or wasn't there. So I'm just going to abstain from answering that.
Did you guys answer that, Don, down there? Did you have an opinion?
I, I think the inconsistency is helpful.
Yeah, I think that the initial approval and then subsequent about face, again, gives us the reason why we're here for the interpretation. I think that's self-evident, so.
Does the testimony of the applicant and applicant's witnesses about their observation on how this location of the dwelling has been used have any bearing in your decision of whether there was a roof deck?
No.
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 And based on everything you just heard as it relates to the answer to those questions, do you feel that the property has a roof deck today?
I do.
That's the interpretation.
I do, albeit unsafe and maybe not up to code, but I think that's, again, part of the nonconformity to begin with, so.
I feel like there's an unrealized, unfinished deck that was intended to be there.
Look upon it as, they asked for it, then they asked for something else, and now they're asking for it again, okay? But I go back to how the property was sold. The property was sold having a deck, so that's it, sometimes.
Well, I think that goes back to the question that you did not put to the group, which was if, and if people thought the language in the master deed was conclusive, I don't think that that got passed around separately.
You've mentioned it, but I'm not sure that we discussed it separately.
I answered it.
And that question leads into, you know, the final question with it. May the applicant proceed to construct a railing and new deck servicing on the area in question without needing variance relief for an expansion of a nonconforming use, which would be the D2, or any other variance relief under subsection C, NJSA 40A, colon, 55D, dash, seven?
I feel very strongly that a request for variance is the proper way to approach this so that positive, negative criteria can be addressed, all of the various setback issues, because this is just a conception and not something that is currently existing.
I would like to see an application on this with the design and the materials and.
I don't want to leapfrog over all of this.
We first got to answer the question whether or not it's required based upon whether or not there's an interpretation of an existing deck. In terms of materials and all that, that would be, I, I'd have no problem coming back for that, to be honest with you.
I, I think it's required, my, my, that my answer was clear.
Our position is that we don't have to get a D2, but I'd have no issue coming back for materials and all.
And that's basically, that's why we're here, to see.
Can you read the question one more time? I'm sorry, I'm a pain, I'm sorry.
I'm happy you're asking.
Very detailed analysis, that's why I kind of came prepared a little bit on it, so. But may the applicant proceed to construct a railing and new deck on the surface on the area in question without needing variance relief for an expansion of a nonconforming use, the D2 variance, or any variance relief under subsection C, NJSA 40A, colon, 55D, dash, seven?
So the question is asking. So the question is asking, can they do this?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Beakman, could that be a condition for proof?
I'm sorry?
Could that be a condition for proof?
No, this is, this is.
Only interpretation.
Interpretation, yeah.
But we would, we would agree, we would submit, we'd come back with a design of railings and deck, I'd have no issue.
I, I think that the arguments that have been presented over the past three hearings have been inadequate and insufficient to justify granting interpretation, and I think that you need to receive an application for variances.
I would agree with that.
Now, before we also finalize anything in regards to motion, there's also two parts to this argument, remember? So the second part of the argument was questions related to development within section 30 dash 73.12 as it relates to the open space.
But before we get to that, where whether or not there's an existing deck, where.
You want to finalize this first before those.
Let's do that for, yeah, because we don't get to the second question.
That's certainly fine, but no, we want to do it all at once.
I differ from my fellow board members. I think they should be able to construct the deck. I think the, the documents laid out, the deed lays out, the first initial permit lays it out, that that was intended to be a deck, and I feel like they should be able to build that.
Based on how the applicant purchased it, I agree with the debt.
I agree there's an existing structure.
I think the due diligence that goes into, again, preparing a master deed, I just, I don't see how they could write that in. A title company could write that in and make it to a closing. Regardless of that, I still think it has been there. I think that they bought it as that, I think that it has maybe not transpired the way prior owners have hoped, or these owners have hoped, but I, it doesn't negate the fact that it's there.
I'm just gonna ask again, if something is a conception in somebody's mind but has not been realized, how can we say that this is a non-conforming use that should be approved as is? It's not a use if it doesn't exist. So that's where I feel like that the discussion gets completely inconsistent.
Counsel, am I correct? It's a vote of four to on the interpretation that's.
Did anybody make a motion on it yet?
No.
No, we've just been answering the questions.
Before we do that.
It's just a really quick.
There's no further testimony.
No, it's not testimony, it's a technical question, but go.
Yeah, just to assuage, because I think with Wendy and Russell and even Jill, I think we're all on the same page that it doesn't change anything for people that still want to expand non-conforming uses, that doesn't change. Like, they still need to come here to do that. What this just says is that for this particular homeowner that has an existing roof deck or stated roof deck or what have you, that they can continue to go about that. The approval was there, the approval was denied. Ultimately, the interpretation, again, just in my opinion, it's, it's there, it's enumerated in a few different places too. But it doesn't negate the fact too, that again, people still need to come here for variances, for other ones that would follow that, it doesn't change that piece, they still have to come here for variances, not them in particular, but other.
No, but now you're changing.
Well, we're not.
But by this action, it would change the ground rules.
No, we have to look at every application independently.
It would not, because their interpretation is that it was there, they never abandoned the use. If someone had come here and they never had a roof deck, they still have to come to us if it's a non-conforming use or a variance. That doesn't change. This is strictly based on them and that they've already had a roof deck, even though there's no railings or whatnot, you may say it's not a roof deck, but I just want to clarify that, and maybe the attorney can clarify, this doesn't expand it to everybody.
This is specific to the property.
Right.
Right.
So I think that was part of your concern, that it does shake the rules, but it really doesn't.
Well, it, it does, there's, because fundamentally, I don't believe that there was a roof deck there at any time, so.
I mean.
Everything else flows from that, which is why you have to come in front of a board and request variances, because you want to do something that is not currently there.
Yeah, it's.
Right, and so.
Struggling with the door, that's certainly right.
I just don't know what there is to hang one's hat on.
A door.
Yeah.
A door, but you've never seen, you've never seen a door.
Can we get back to, we're getting in the weeds a little bit, can we get back to the.
But we're entitled to the deliberation. If we want to sit here talking about it, please don't shut me up.
No, I.
I just answered your question of where does it hang a hat.
And I think the absence of a railing, I mean, whether it's on the perimeter of the roof deck or what is allowed, I believe Donna could clarify, the Juliet balconies with a door on the second floor, on the second floor, there's still no railing on the door or on the edge, but there's still a door, period, there's a door. But to Mr. Harris's point, where does that door lead to? A roof or a deck or a roof deck, but there's still a door to an egress on a second floor with no railing, so either we allow it to continue with just being a door, and we interpret it as, hey, come to us for a variance to make it safe and make it compliant, or it's always been a door, it's always been a roof deck, in my opinion, and they should just be able to make it safe, period.
Can you do that?
So it doesn't need a railing?
Well, I, I never said it didn't.
Under that argument, they could keep going with what they had.
Well, technically, they can, they are, they have a door.
Submitting for a permit is to put a rail and put a deck to make it.
But I think how we get there is the issue, because, and clearly there's disagreement on whether or not there was a roof deck, but I don't think that you can get to a roof deck without a door, and I think that it all hinges on that, pun intended.
There are plenty of buildings that have doors that lead to nowhere.
Okay, but they normally have a railing, but they normally have a railing or something, or maybe talk about, you know, how do they get a CO or not a CO? I mean, there was a CO, there was a door, there was no, to my knowledge, additional conditions on that door being on there for conditions of occupancy, so I think we're kind of circling the same drain.
Anyone wanna put forth a vote?
Hey, I have a question because of what Mr. Karras put on the table about coming back with a design. So this is for Chris, how would that work with an interpretation?
I mean, that would be submitted to you at that stage, regardless of.
But it doesn't come back to the board?
I, listen, ordinarily it doesn't, but I certainly understand the concerns with, you know, aesthetically, how it's gonna look, the materials and all. If the board, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking we can probably find something within the code to file for it, because I'd have no issue aesthetically to making sure that the board is comfortable with what is going up there, how it's gonna appear, the materials that are being used. I'd have absolutely, neither does my client any issue with that.
But part of the paperwork filing process with that then? Because it's not tied to.
It wouldn't be tied to this.
To this.
There's no variance.
There is no variance, but it's an interpretation, but I'd agree, if we had a vote in favor of our interpretation, that we will come in with a design for it.
How?
But there, there's no application, and on top of that, they would still have to follow community design standards, correct? So that, that wouldn't really make a difference anyway. It's still within their purview to do it as they please, as long as it conforms, correct? If the interpretation is in.
If it conforms.
Okay.
Yeah. This is what I, we can, certainly, we'd have to submit the aesthetic design to your office.
Well, as you know, you'd have to, the aesthetic design and the whole building permit package.
And I'd have no problem with holding off on that until the board wanted to comment on it.
But how, how are we doing that legally?
I would try to figure out a way.
What authority, does anyone have to say no?
It would be an advice of consent.
If this is adopted as an interpretation.
Listen, I'm trying to work with the board, because I certainly understand aesthetically how we can do it.
There's really no way to do it.
There's no way to compel.
So basically, that's what it comes down to, there's no way to compel. So right now, we're still gonna go back to what we're here for this evening, which is the interpretation, and we'll get to, does anyone wanna make a motion one way or the other?
I'll make a motion if you agree to the interpretation, as Mr. Karras had put forward in his brief in argument.
Certainly.
So we need to clarify that, though, because obviously. So the, the argument, though, that was in the brief was more related to the ordinance section 30 dash 73.12. The application that I believe the board made the motion to approve relates to the question of the existence of a status of a roof deck.
I thought we were doing interpretation apologies.
So it's interpreting it as though it existed at the time, it's, it's, you're considering a roof deck that does not need to come before you for a D2 variance, for a D2 variance relief, or to construct a railing and new deck service.
Yes, my brief does indicate there, the interpretation under the initial part of the legal analysis. It, it does address the interpretation.
I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not going to the open space portion of it, though.
That's correct, we're limiting it to that one issue.
I just want to make sure that's.
But what if the roof deck, when filed, does not meet the design standards?
Well, that would fall to the regular design standards.
To the community design standards, because what was just stated, they could do any deck, rail, any deck.
Basically, it's us, we will be told to take a hike if.
Well, I want to clarify, I guess, if I can get clarity on that, if we say it's interpreted as there is a roof deck, there's no railing, anybody that wants to put a railing, they would still need to submit the proper permits and compliance documents, which would include, correct me if I'm wrong, what kind of material is gonna go.
If they interpret it in favor, the vote is, you know, in favor of, then you would make a determination whether or not the community design standards were met, and if they aren't, I would have to come in here then.
Okay, just want that clarified, because that was clear.
So that would be the procedure, if they didn't conform it to those standards, then I would have to come to the board.
Yeah, I don't think that this interpretation vacates any other standard, it just.
The setback variance is already being, is already being violated, so.
We're agreeing with his assessment.
So just to clarify, the motion in favor of the interpretation that this is a roof deck and does not require a variance.
But no, you said that, but conditioned upon design standards.
Well, it's already conditioned, they have to do that.
No, it's not.
It doesn't change that.
Your statement, no, your statement.
Really quick, can I get clarity from the board attorney on that?
So just make it conditional on the design standards.
On compliance with the community design standards. As per the ordinance.
Correct. Just make sure you're not overriding that aspect of your interpretation.
That's fine.
But wouldn't that be, everything would have to comply anyway, how would we override that based on the interpretation? I don't.
It doesn't hurt to say.
It did, exactly.
But I want, but.
I don't, I'm sorry, I just don't understand.
Hold on, one at a time, one at a time.
But, so this is why I want to make sure, I want to make sure that's clear to my office, what is approved, because it is, the railing will be in the setback area.
Yes.
So what do you need to be clear on?
So.
So she's saying that they wouldn't be able to issue that permit because it needed variances?
No.
No, because this interpretation.
Says that there's no variance.
It's the need for it. Said it doesn't require an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Correct.
Not that it applies to the.
The variance is that it doesn't need any variance relief, it's not expansion of its permit.
But if I were to submit any permit, or anybody were to submit any permit, it still has to oblige by that unless it's like in redevelopment, which is a whole of the ballgame, but that's enumerated somewhere, is my point.
But, but that's why the resolution has to be clear, has to be clear of what you are approving as part of this interpretation. Because.
I would submit it, it does require any variance relief, but we would have to comply with the design standards as per the, you know, as you always have to comply. And if you don't comply, you get a deviation from the design standards, but it does require variance of any kind.
But we, because that's the thing, in your, now, I don't want to speak for you about what the interpretation is, but it seems to be wrapping in that you've determined there's no variance needed for the railing.
Is that the force decision?
I think that's the whole purpose of the interpretation, unless I missed something in the last three meetings.
No, 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 the interpretation was the D2. This is, this is, would be, this would be a bulk.
If you go back to my report, clarify between the types of variances and relief, that doing the roof deck would require not just the expansion of a non-conforming use, but the community design regulations.
But we take the position that no variance relief is required, but in terms of the designing the railings, the type of material on the decking and all, any design standards that comply with the materials, the height of the railing itself, how to be by code, that has to certainly comply. But in terms of variance relief, we're not obligated to get any variance relief, that's the interpretation we're looking for.
JJ, can you rephrase your motion?
Yeah, would, would be rephrasing it to community design standards, excuse me, community design standards, I am tired of everybody. Would that be all encompassing, or do we need to go further on more broad language? Is there anything else that we would do?
What are you saying?
He's saying just going to the community design standards, but we're still not addressing what would be the bulk variance aspect of it, which is, is Solano's concern with regards to when the application comes in, whether it just comes in.
But the application isn't coming in.
But that's the.
No, the permit, the zoning permit with the construction packet.
Sorry, this application, sorry.
Is that really our purview to get that specific, or are we supposed to just decide the interpretation?
If you don't, it might get denied based on being a violation of the setback at that point, and then you're, we're here, then I'm here on the deal.
So if JJ made the motion that said that, bear with me, we're agreeing with, he's making a motion to agree with the interpretation that it's a roof deck, and because it was there.
It's not considered to be an expansion.
It's not an expansion of.
That regards to D2 variance, and then also the other aspect of whether the bulk variance is still gonna be something you need to take into consideration, or.
Right. That because we're agreeing with the interpretation, that is a deck, that a variance isn't needed, and it's not considered an expansion of non-conforming use.
And certain consequences flow from that. So if you want any, if you expect to have any input, per se, on what is done and what it looks like, you're not going to get that by approving the interpretation.
But then the part two of the motion, not to speak for you, I'm sorry.
No, you're on the right.
That the design of the deck has to meet the community design standards with materials, neighborhood character, the, the house, give me a word, people.
I don't know architectural.
The architecture, the style.
Design.
Right, all of that should be the motion. Go say it.
The motion is that.
Don't wonder even what her words is now.
A D2 variance or any type of variance relief, but we do have to comply with certainly the design standards as it pertains, as the ordinance indicates pertaining, materials, railings.
Architectural state, style, neighborhood context.
Correct.
So really quick before.
Oh, do you allow sidebar? Those are.
Did you say sidebar? No, no, come here, you, you risk, I thought you risked me a question. No, no. I thought you were asking me a question about the bulk.
All right, so.
JJ, you're on. All right, so, so, so the application was applicant seek interpretation whether renovating a roof deck with fiberglass decking and railing constitutes an expansion of non-conforming use. The board finds that it does not constitute expansion of non-conforming use, but further that add the railings do not.
Do not trigger any further variance relief.
Constitute further encouragement if there are. Expansion. Setbacks.
Wish we triggered it.
But the design of the railings are subject to the community design standards of the ordinance. Just the railings or the deck too?
That's the motion.
The decking is not, you know, a visual. I'm just, I'm just clarifying. I'm more hung up on the railings.
Well, I think that all, all the architectural aspects.
Okay.
So that's where my question is initially sent from, is it just the community design standards, or do we have to make sure that it is everything barring what we're interpreting, of course? And that's where my confusion was, so, try it again.
You just said what she said.
Motion to, what Donna said, yeah, there we go. Motion to, no, I'm kidding, motion to approve, to agree that this is a roof deck and that there is no need for a variance in this case, however, the railing is still subject to any type of community design standards, as well as any other construction code requirement.
And allow it.
What Donna said, yes.
Yes, so, and we fill a gap last week, but again, to its relief as it relates to any type of need for a D two variance at this point in time.
No.
And then, you know, any type of added railing, change of decking does not create type of issues of, like, of a bulk, and she, um, setbacks in the situation there as well. Does that cover everything you did there?
Okay, so the motion. I'm sorry, what? That was his motion.
Okay.
You can clarify it with the resolution, because just, I didn't get, because that it's, it's yes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Wendy Glassman?
No.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
No.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Natalie Passerini?
Yes.
JJ Hall?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, you guys put a lot of time into this, so did everybody, the state's professionals, I wanna thank everybody for the amount of time, the consideration that went into this, and certainly the deep analysis that everybody did. All right, so, thank you.
Give a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.